Working with the kids, many of whom you said come from quite traumatic backgrounds. And I know that for the adjustment counselors and the guidance counselors, their professional development is sort of lumped in with the teachers and this might be an aspect, it wouldn't, it's not might, it would be an aspect that I think would be very helpful and informative and for Marty as well. So, maybe we can look at that.
And when Ms. Buchanan and Ms. Bagley-Jones referred to Marty, we're going to refer, talk briefly, the school committee had asked about our parent liaison and you've spoken to the partnership that you and our parent liaison, Marty McKenna, have formed.
Yeah, she's been fabulous. She's been very helpful to our department.
Fabulous.
Well, I'd say you should be, you and your team should be commended. This is pretty amazing work. And I can't imagine what it would be like to come to a country where you don't speak the language at all, which is difficult enough, and try to achieve in the academic world at the same time. So, this is great work. As you say, there's still some challenges, but I think you should feel very, very good about what's happened over the last five years. I have just one question. Can you talk a little bit about how the approaches differ at the middle school and high school level?
Sure.
I would think that's an even greater challenge.
So, at the middle school and the high school, we have an ESL class. So, it's part of their, their, their schedule. And based on their proficiency, they have their, they have an ESL class on their schedule. So, if they are a Level 1 or 2, they receive two periods of ESL per day, or ELE. And the classes differ by proficiency level. So, if you're a 1 or a 2, you won't, you will not receive the same curriculum nor support as a Level 2 or a Level 3. And so, that's what it looks like at the middle school and the high school. We have four periods of scheduled ELE services at each, at each particular level. And the curriculum is determined by the students' proficiency levels.
Great. Mr. Zues?
Yeah, that actually, I'm sorry, that actually raised a question in my mind. So, how does that, is that the same as the sheltered English immersion classroom in the middle and high? Or is that different from what's done at the, at the elementary level?
So, that's different.
Okay.
That's the model that we're allowed, we provide to them right, just provide and support students with right now. I have talked at the middle school level about working with content area teachers to consult or work on curriculum, to modify curriculum for a sheltered English immersion classroom. So, the sheltered English immersion classroom is a teacher who has the specialized training to be able to modify the instruction for ELLs. And even though teachers are going through the SEI training, they still need assistance and support from an ESL professional to be able to say, "Well, have you tried this, this, and this?" Or if we're, "Have you really looked at the student success profile?" to be able to modify the instruction. And based on the can do's and then modifications for the students. So, ESL is a, is a, is a class, and then the teachers have the training to provide the sheltered content.
So, Alyssa, can you make sure that each member of your team knows that every member of the school committee member, of the school committee was impressed with the work they're doing?
I'll let them know.
Thanks.
It is a team. And you know, the, the commit, the level of commitment on the part of all, all of us in the department, I think sometimes is kind of under the, under the radar. And I appreciate you saying that. And I will make sure that they know.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Thank you. Thank you, school committee members. Moving on, administrator of pupil personnel services, reminding the school committee and the viewing public that Karen Klasby, our director, administrative pupil personnel, is retiring. And so, we've, for those of you new to the process, and Ms. Padera has heard me say this several times in the last two weeks, in many districts, when you have administrative openings, superintendents might screen the applicants and then give four or five applications to a screening committee. But perfected over the last number of superintendents, we have a system that works here in Milton. And so, what happens, we form a committee of parents, educators, administrators, school committee representative, and we give all of the applications to the committee members. We brainstorm what we're looking for in the position, in the individual who is going to fill the position. And we have the individuals screen the applications, and they decide who they're going to interview. And as I've said to them, I've gone through these processes. And if one person on a committee wants to see an individual, we bring that individual in for the interview. We then brainstorm the questions. So, as not to advantage or disadvantage any candidate, we break into, Dr. Jafun had perfected this part of the process into two groups. And so, we really have two hour, they have two hours worth of questions. We come together, we share the answers, we share our impressions of the candidates, their strengths and weaknesses. And so, we formed a committee. I want to recognize Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan on this first round, PS Middle School Principal, Dr. Spalding, our high school principal, James Jett. You were well represented on both committees by Becky Padera, school committee member. The MEA sent two teachers, Shannon Brooks, a COAT teacher from the Tucker, Tricia Leahy, a service provider. From the administrative level, we had Karen Cahill, the high school guidance director. From our CPAC, we had President Michelle Conley, Doug Conley, and Shannon Gallagher. So, we had an outstanding first committee. They saw all the applicants. We interviewed for two different days, and we came out with three finalists. The charge is those individuals could be the administrator of pupil personnel, the director of pupil personnel. We then formed a second committee, Janet Sheehan, Glenn Pavlicek, myself, Becky Padera again, which was invaluable to be on both committees. We had our four elementary principals and Amy Tom, our science department head from Milton High School. And so, we've begun to check reference checks. We had a second round of interviews. We have some more additional reference checks to make. And then I'll be communicating with the school committee chair, as that is your appointment. And we'll talk about how to bring a candidate forward for the school committee to interview and make a final appointment. But I wanted to give the viewing public an update and status of where we are with that very, very important appointment. And secondly, we, in the advancement budget, we had funded this year a data specialist. We realized the need, again basing all of these decisions on data, the increased data with MCAS and PAC, our internal assessments. Well, I have to tell you, once you get into this interviewing, and it was, it's a very specialized position. We put out a tremendous number of nets and interviews. I want to recognize Jonathan Redden, who worked very, very hard and made a contact. And I'm very pleased to tell you, in your packet tonight, I've given you the resume of Vee Vu. And we have made the hire. And I have to tell you, I don't think anybody, I think more excited than Vee Vu is Janet Sheehan, because Vee has extended herself across this district. She has also, in three short weeks, created short and long-term goals for herself. Ms. Kelly asked for a report on internal assessments. We called Ms. Vu in. She had, she was halfway through the presentation already before she knew we wanted to present it to the school committee. And we're going to bring her to your April 1st school committee with some administrators on that internal assessment presentation. So, I'm very, very happy to tell you that that hire has been made. And the response from administrators across the district has been phenomenal to that appointment. Next, under my report, we've been talking about the FY '16 cut reduction list update, bringing the public back to the process that we went through, building up the budget, presenting to the full school committee, the finance subcommittee, going to the warrant committee, the warrant committee, funding the budget. But us having to come up with a cut reduction list of $500,000. We went out, again, we were snowed out of several presentations. But we had an outstanding representative group from across the district at the peer school. And the school committee was there to hear the feedback from parents. We had an open budget meeting where we had parents, guardians, and citizens speak to the prioritized list of cuts and reductions. And working with finance subcommittee, we're that, I would ask you to take a look at this last, as of yesterday morning, cut list restoration priority.
I'm sorry, should I pass these to the?
Sure, that would be wonderful.
Sure.
That would be wonderful. So, I'm going to turn this over, if it's all right, to Dr. Pavlicek?
Sure, just a little, just a little more context, yeah. What, what we asked the superintendent to do was to, based on the feedback that we've gotten from various audiences, to take that feedback and make some recommendations about how cuts would be restored if there is additional funding. And what we expect to happen is that, we're hoping that, that as the process continues, that more funds might become available. And we think that it makes some sense for the school committee to have gotten a consensus on what cuts should be restored and what order. With the exception of the first one, where we think that there is a strategy for how we might be able to do that, even if there aren't any additional funds, priorities 2 through 12 would be restored in the order that you see them as funding becomes available.
And I want to recognize, we say that this process is continual, that the school committee listened to the parents and citizens who came forward at the different presentations and who have contacted us, who have responded to our request for input on the school budget. And as I said at the peer school, my observation is, over the years, to see the citizens of Milton and the parents of students in the Milton Public Schools own the school budget, understand the school budget, be versed, well-versed in the school budget, is really, really an amazing process. And to the school committee, to hear the input from the parents and the citizens in prioritizing, as funds become available, how these positions will be restored. So, I want to turn this over to Dr. Pavlicek to go over the list.
Sure. This list is, has a slight modification from the one you were, that's in your packet. So, it's one that says, "School Committee 318, 2015, revised" at the bottom. There's an edit that was made earlier today. And basically, what we just did is to walk through these. You'll notice, really, the most important restorations, the priority restorations of those of people in front of children. First one is, the chairman mentioned, is one we think we can accomplish now, which is the, we had originally looked at restructuring STEP and losing one, one teaching position there. We have a student who is tuitioned in to the district, and we're going to use that money to, in our special education budget to free up some money that we believe we can use to keep this general ed position in, in the STEP program. So, this one, we, we think we can accomplish without any restoration. So, this is sort of one we can tick off at this point. The rest of them are subject to receiving more funding as we go along. We have, you know, the, the governor's budget is out. There are some increased, some increases in local aid, Chapter 70, and various other parts of his cherry sheet that are encouraging in the sense that they are above what the warrant committee was projecting as our revenue for next year. So, there is some hope we'll get some money to restore some of these positions. And so, in order, running down what we would restore, the first restoration would be the art, music cuts in the elementary school, the reduction of art in the grades 4 and 5, the reduction of art and music in kindergarten, and the elimination of chorus. So, that would be the, the first, the first further restoration. The second was the, we had identified as a high school world language cut. In any case, a cut of 1.0 at the high school would somewhat depend on, on student choice and the electives. But it was identified as a world language cut, and that's our second restoration above the, above the STEP. Beyond that, we had identified a number of minor cutbacks, you know, one elective in art, one elective in music, one elective in computer, et cetera. At the middle school and high school, a series of seven pullbacks. And as we mentioned before, when you, when you bring a teacher back from a full-time teacher to a .8 full-time teacher, what happens is the person gets laid off. They generally look for another job somewhere else. We end up at the end of the summer trying to find someone who will take a part-time position. It's not the best model. So, that is a high priority restoration for us as well. The history teacher at the middle school, which would have impacted the team structure at grade 7 and 8, is the next, we put as our next level of restoration. The preschool coordinator was a half-time new position we wanted for this year, that we took off our budget request. If we were to get this far down the list, which would be just shy of $300,000 in new money, that would be one, actually, a new half-time position that we, we would want to add for coordinating all the various different preschools. Now, we have three different preschool situations in, in three different schools. So, there's a reasonable amount of coordination to do there. The, going down the list further, we have the, the administrative shift at the middle school, where our model of two vice principals would be replaced by one vice principal and a dean, which is a lesser, non-evaluatory position. The reduction of one of our administrative assistants, and then some cuts in professional development, text materials and supplies, and equipment are at the bottom of the list. So, our priorities were to restore positions that were in front of children. And then, at the lower end of the list, is either positions that weren't directly in the classroom. And then finally, those cuts that actually are non-personnel cuts, we would, would certainly be the last to restore. So, that's the, this came out of discussions at the finance subcommittee, again, with the central office administrative team. So, that's what we have for you tonight.
Ms. Padera?
So, Dr. Pavlicek, do we know at all, I know it's hard to say about the timing of this, I'm just wondering of, you know, teachers that might be being reduced or cut, you know, their timing of having to worry about finding another job, or, you know, how long they're going to be kind of wondering that before we look at the funding that might be coming in or not coming in?
Well, the, there are, again, there's several layers to the process for the town. The funding that might be available, we certainly know right now that would, should the governor's budget prevail, we would get about $275,000 in additional funding to Milton. Even, we will see how that plays out in the House and Senate. The House budget should be coming out shortly. They're working on it now. That'll give us better indication. Some of the adjustments in the governor's budget are formulaic. There were some reduced chargebacks to the town. There was a reduction in the cost of retired teachers' health insurance, for instance, a reduction in some other costs. Those are formula costs. So, those are probably pretty solid. The increase of $20 a head for Chapter 70 is less than it's been for the last several years. The general formula has been a minimum of $25 a head for the last few years. So, that one's probably not too bad either. The projected increase in unrestricted general government aid, who knows? I mean, that, that's a little more volatile generally. So, I mean, there's a reasonable expectation that some of this will come back. We'll get better information when the House budget comes out, still better when the Senate budget comes out. But we'll really know, as far as our budget goes, by the first week in May, because that's when town meeting is going to vote our budget. So, I mean, it's, you know, at that point, we'll, we'll know what we have for next year. Even if, in fact, the, the state budget hasn't been passed by that point, which very well may not be, we'll be working on at least, you know, better data as to what the likely local aid is and so forth. And so, it'll be a refining process. I said, you know, as I say, the, the warrant for town meeting hasn't gone to press yet. There'll probably some be, some modifications between now and then. But really, it's, you know, that, that first week in May, when we, when we have town meeting, that we'll have a, a reasonable idea where this is.
Okay.
But just, just to be clear, for the committee and for the people watching at home, with the exception of Chapter 70, $275,000 to Milton doesn't necessarily mean $275,000 to the schools.
Right.
Ms. Kelly?
So, you may be surprised to hear me say this, but I would much prefer the order go back to the way it was before, with the music, art at the middle school, high school being above the world language. If one was to look at the amount of resources that this district spends on world language versus all the others, I mean, there is, there's no comparison. I think to, to say potentially that all those particular classes are going to be cut back, as well as business, tech, family, and consumer science, I just think I would recommend that that order be changed.
Is that a motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
The world language at the high school, Mary, what was that? What is that class? Is it the honor Spanish?
It's going to be Spanish, and then it's going to have impact on advanced placement classes across, possible impact on advanced placement across.
French.
French, oh, excuse me. French, and then impact on, oh, advanced placement in, we're not sure in which languages. Run.
You'd be impacting the non-immersion French classes at the high school. And so, what that will do is shift students who want to start a language at the high school into other languages. And it'll force a bump around the world language continuum there. And we would have to see what courses were on the low end of, of usage and make cuts depending on that. You can't, for instance, cut French 2 necessarily, because if you've got a sophomore who's taking French 2, they can't start Spanish 1 in their junior year and make three years of a language, which is what most colleges are looking for. So, you've got to be careful how you eliminate things and phase it through. So, although you, we talk about it as a French cut, it will have ripples into the other languages.
Yes. And can I follow up?
Absolutely.
And you, I'm sure you all know by now that, you know, how I feel about art and music and where I want it to be. My concern about the world languages, I remember years ago, when that first started happening, the honors levels and the, honors level Spanish were incredibly crowded. There weren't even enough seats in the room. And that just felt so unfair to me. And that did continue for a while. So, if it means, I don't, it was between a rock and a hard place, I guess.
Right. And there's, there's no right answer to this in terms of the order. But I, I think the feedback that we got from parents was precisely that, that these AP classes are important, that the impact that, that this one change would have across the AP classes was significant. And they urged us to be mindful of that. So, I.
So, I'll make the motion to reverse the order between the arts, music, business, tech, family, consumers for 1.4 with the world language. So, it would become, the art and music, et cetera, would become number three, and the world language become number four.
Well, I'll second it.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it. Sorry.
Moved by Ms. Kelly. So, this is, this is a motion to amend the list. Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Bagley-Jones. Discussion?
So, can I, I'm just looking for a little bit more specifics on, it says, middle school, art, music, computer, high school, art, music, computer. Do we know what courses we're talking? Are they eliminating courses? Are they just reducing?
It would be the elimination of courses. And those students would go into other electives, which would increase the numbers in those other electives.
Do we know what courses would be eliminating?
No, they're, no.
Just, we would look at the least, you know?
And it would have impact on having to, we've, let those teachers go, repost the positions for .8. And those teachers probably, in our reality, would seek positions elsewhere. They're all successful in those disciplines. And then, to fill a .8 position, have explained to the public and to the school committee, people don't take part-time at .8 teaching positions until the end of the summer or Labor Day.
So.
So, it's absolutely the elimination in every one of those disciplines of one of the course options.
Courses. And then, so then, the other side of things with the high school world language, what that would be is possibly eliminating the ability for some students to take three years of one language possibly, and then they would not be eligible for certain colleges that they're applying to. That's what we could be talking about.
And remember, I, I said to the finance subcommittee, to Chairman Walker's point, they're all very, very involved. And that's a very involved kind of reduction, too.
Ms. Kelly?
So, just to, to be clear, on the middle, high school, art, music, we're talking about seven teachers that potentially will say, "I'm not going to be working here anymore." And then you're going to have to try and fill a .8 for each of those positions. Correct?
Yes, that's already happened. And so, to bring it back for somebody just viewing, when we started this process, we brought each individual in because we have a reduction enforced list. And so, these individuals have been spoken to by their administrators or myself. And then we did a full presentation for the entire staff. That's right, that's to Mrs. Kelly's point, it's seven people.
Ms. Downs?
It's a little confusing for the audience. Have they, the order on the handout is different from the order on the screen?
No, I think we gave up.
New handout.
You're the only one that didn't get one.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So, I guess I would say, as much as I, I would remain concerned about the higher level Spanish classes and the Latin and the other things. But that the art and the music, and the computers especially, for kids in this day and age, if it's that many staff and that many courses, I mean, I hope we don't get to this point. But if we do, I guess I would go with seeing those higher than, on the replacement list, higher than the world language, even though that would concern me as well. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the two different lists, just like Mara said.
The one that says revised.
Right. So, the parents, you're saying, some parents said the world language should be second on the list versus the music and art. Is that correct?
Well, they didn't say it should be second on the list. They said, "Here's why we think this is something that you should give serious consideration to."
And if I can just ask another question, but the music, art, computers, that involves the seven teachers?
Yes.
Okay. So, for me, that would go above the world language.
And that's why you seconded the motion, I believe?
Yes.
Well, she did that to be nice.
I did, because I'm sitting here.
She wasn't sold on it.
No, I feel, I feel both sides. I do.
Mr. Zues?
I have a question of the administration. I think that the chair well articulated what the feedback was for the parents. Are there, is there any additional rationale from the administration for having world language, other than what's already been discussed here? Having world language above these, these electives?
No.
Good to know.
Shortest answer of the night.
Ms. Sheridan?
So, there was a document that was emailed to us, the adjustments to the cut list. It was from you, Dr. Pavlicek. And I think that that really clearly articulated it. And I don't know if everyone, if the, if the public is going to see that, just kind of the, the explanation of why these cuts were reordered. So, I think you've said it, but I think for people looking at it, it's hard to see the numbers. I mean, it's, it's easy to see the numbers, but not the, the explanation isn't there. The explanation was in a backup document that wasn't attached to this, but was emailed out to the school committee. So, I just wanted to say that. And I support the recommendation of Mrs. Kelly.
On the motion to amend the restoration priorities list to flip priorities 3 and 4, all in favor? and four, all in favor? Order two. Walker and Zulus against.
Thank you.
And so to put, this is an active list, so now my interpretation is that you'll work with the warrant committee and we'll be contacted. And this is really what we're living by, day by day.
Right.
Thank you. Going on, the school committee had asked for an update on our family outreach liaison hire through the advancement budget. In your packet, you were given a piece from Ms. Marty O'Keefe McKenna. This will be posted tomorrow. I just want to highlight, you heard Ms. Buchanan use the word fabulous. Ms. McKenna, O'Keefe McKenna, has extended herself to the Milton Public Schools. She was hired as the parent liaison to really work with our preschool initiative, our kindergarten and our first grades, and she has extended herself across the district, but been integral to the preschool initiative at the Tucker, making contact with all of the families, doing the outreach of who would be involved in the program, partnering with the teacher, the principal, the registration process. I want to recognize Ms. McKenna in that she has been integral in, we presented, I think, one of the accomplishments of this year is to bring all of these preschool programs together, driven by the school committee's interest and advocacy for preschool. Ms. McKenna has really almost personally had conversations with every preschool parent registering, kindergarten registrations, and first grade registrations. You can see the numbers, over 400 families have expressed interest in registering in all of these programs, and she is, in addition to the individuals, a central office being the face of the Milton Public Schools. Events, Ms. McKenna has extended herself to over 25 Milton Public School evening events from open houses to the STEM information night, and she is just not an attendee at these events. She reaches out to families, she informs families of the events. Next, you'll see that over 40 families have, she has reached out to over 40 new families to really help them in a myriad of needs that they might have in the district, everything from transportation to athletics, to homework, to liaising with families. Teachers and administrators have, she has made, there have been 30 referrals directly to her from individuals, staff members, administrators and teachers, as I said, to her to reach out to parents. In the registration, she's helped us in the preschool conferences, she's been integral in conferencing. She was very active through the fall and the spring conference schedule, making sure that families were notified, and if they couldn't come at the assigned times, setting them up. She's extended herself from the food pantry to the Milton residence, you can read the list yourselves. She's, she worked through the holiday season with organizations that wanted to reach out to the Milton Public Schools. Our calculus project at the high school has a requirement really of parental involvement, and she has worked with the teachers and administrators to strengthen those parent liaisons. And my personal thanks to her goes to, in the youth sports, I want to bring you back to Milton Youth Soccer, reached out to the Milton Public Schools in a partnership to diversify the participation in Milton Youth Soccer, and Ms. McKenna really partnered with Milton Youth Soccer to make the participation more reflective of the diversity in our community. And so I think that her report to you supports your advancement position, and to hear Alyssa Buchanan unsolicited use the word, she's been fabulous partnering with her, extending out to, and partnering with parents of children new to the district. Any questions on Marty McKenna?
Bagley Jones?
I have a quick question. This is great, Mary, to get this kind of report, and she clearly, I've run into her at different events, and she's clearly done a great job. It might be helpful as we go forward in terms of funding and possible grants to have a little more of a track and referral, what are the kind of referrals we're doing, how many. Positions like this often can be the first on the chopping block, and sometimes the data behind it can make a connection to the academic need, the family needs and the academic needs.
Excellent. And she has done a tremendous amount of that documentation.
I just want to know it's being done, so if we need it, we can pull it out, because you could submit this in a grant.
Yeah, I asked her only for a summary, but I can give you that in backup information.
Yeah, so it's there. This is great, though, she's doing a fabulous job.
I think it's an impressive list. I think for the 15, 16 school year, it would be helpful, since we had some very specific objectives in creating the position, that we start that year with some specific objectives going forward for what we'd like to accomplish.
Next on the agenda, we submitted, there's been a lot of discussion about the weather and the snow. And so we talked at the last meeting about our 15, our 14, 15 calendar, and there will be no more snow, and we're all set, and we have, we're in a good place. And so I submitted a calendar to you for the 15, 16 school year that, you're laughing that I said no more snow? And so you're disappointed. The 15, 16 school year. And so I have received feedback from families and tremendous amount of information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the commissioner. And some individuals have asked about, thinking about eliminating February and April and making a March vacation week, but with the new implementation of PARC, which I've given you the schedule in your green folders, it really, PARC is administered during the entire month of March. We've been asked to look at the religious holidays, and so I've asked the chair if I, in my email blast tomorrow, we're going to survey the community. We had anticipated putting a new calendar in front of you, but I've heard that from other communities that there was tremendous pushback when the parents and guardians weren't surveyed. So we're going to learn from other communities, and we're going to survey our parents and guardians about an edited 15, 16 school year, and on April 1st, based on their response, bring you a proposal. Again, every day is valuable, because remember, next year, since all of you probably don't have that calendar memorized, we begin school, we're very fortunate that we begin before Labor Day. She must be thinking about us tonight, Prior Superintendent Jafun really led that as one of the first districts to start school before Labor Day. The commissioner is urging every school district to now do that, because he is not going to give people waivers to go to school less than 180 days. Am I right, Dr. Pavlicek and Ms. Sheen? And so we're in good straits there. But the commissioner is encouraging districts to look at their school calendar, consider religious holidays, and starting, but next year, you start school in September. Labor Day is really late, and that really then pushes the end of school later into June. So we're going to survey, send a survey out tomorrow on my email blast, and perhaps bring you an edited 15, 16 calendar at your...
So I've suggested, I've suggested to the superintendent, you're going to hear in a few minutes about a recommendation from the Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee regarding a survey of parents. So I've suggested to the superintendent, so as not to inundate the parents with surveys, that we combine those in the same e-blast.
And I actually think that our survey came first, so...
Oh, boy. Well, since it's my email blast, we'll see who goes first.
Bagley Jones?
Mary, I just have a question about that or a request. Could you reiterate in like three bullet points on your survey or on your email blast what we cannot do, because the viewing public just really, so many comments and emails about it, and there's just some real misinformation out there.
Right. I will put it all out, the commissioner has made himself very clear, and everything we can do, we're doing.
Right. But if you could just reiterate it in bullet points everywhere you go, that would be helpful.
Right.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
With Mr. Zulus's survey, will there be a video or music or anything that goes along with it?
No.
Just asking. Just wondering why in, I don't want to start anything here, but why half-day on Good Friday and why go-to-school on Yom Kippur? Why not handle them both the same?
Yes, that's what I'm going to survey.
I'm sorry?
That memo I put to you when I was going to bring you an edited, but tomorrow I'm going to be asking what options people want.
Got it, so a whole...
Yes.
Got it, great, thank you.
We learned that from other school districts who didn't ask the parents and guardians. And very quickly, I was away on a family vacation. Who does any member want to tell about? I don't think we can thank the MFE enough, recognize Marion Roll and Karen Viveras and every single individual who participated, donated, attended, but does somebody want to give a brief update of MFE's STEAM celebration?
I will.
As the school committee representative to the MFE?
Yes, it was fantastic, and I think I said to all of you that the funniest moment was definitely with Dr. Spalding, but I'm not going to share that story, because it was just, you had to kind of be there, but she was the best comedian of the night. I think she kind of stole the show, her and her significant other, because they purchased, I think, several weeks of Patriots tickets, which I'm not sure Dr. Spalding had agreed to in the beginning. But I'm not sure, I'd love to hear later how they did on the, is it the Star Lab they're trying to do, the specific...
It's almost full funding.
Yeah, I mean, there was extreme excitement over that, and I think a lot of people participated and helped fund that. It was a great night. As usual, MFE sold out, and the room was just largely filled with a lot of really happy and energetic people about the night. So I think that Marion Roll and Karen Viveras did a great job. They were cool as cucumbers, and everything went exactly as they thought it would.
I wasn't there, but of course I'll have a story. I came in Monday, and Principal, Milton High School Principal James Jet said to me, three times in the morning, "I had a great time." So I said, "You had a gr-" what does that mean, a great time on Saturday night at a school event celebration? And he said, "I had a great time." So I think that speaks to celebration and on behalf of the Milton Public Schools and the partnership with the MFE, we really couldn't go on and on enough about it.
Can I say one more thing, too? Because this was right before that big event started, we had several of our students representing with Dr. Noreen Burdette that gave a performance that really was probably the only time that the event was quiet, because, you know, people like to talk at these things, but they were just so stunning, their performance was just so unbelievable, that everybody was just quiet and, you know, it was just breathtaking. So as usual, they're our best ambassadors to what we do in the school. I think it was really, really wonderful.
Well, I think Marion Roll and Karen Viveras, when they were planning the event, they asked for students to speak to technology, part of STEAM in the Milton Public Schools, and the need for technology, and the two musical presentations, and student greeters at the door. So every year, this event changes, and important to them, when they partner with us, they wanted student representation at the event.
I was just going to add, the student speakers that spoke about the need for technology in addition to the entertainment, they were so articulate and so vibrant, like they just totally, you knew that their experiences in Milton Public Schools were enriched by the technology that was offered to them, and it was very exciting to hear and see. And also, there were some nice awards given out to several alums, and recognized some couples in the community that have been outstanding advocates for us as well. So that was a nice addition.
I said to the superintendent, I actually said to James Jet that night, for me, these students were the highlight of the evening. They are our best advertisement. I was very proud.
Thank you. Very briefly, talking about technology, where began this week, our PARC testing across the district as a result of our partnership with MFE and the Copeland Foundation with the infrastructure, the Milton Public School budget, the capital budget, the MFE celebration last year, and a tremendous amount of work led by Dr. Pavlicek and Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheen with our PARC team. They are right there to troubleshoot any issues that happen. Students are on the, in the labs and on the Chromebooks, and you haven't begun at the high school yet. No, but the elementary began, and it was, all of your preparation was flawless, and we have begun the PARC testing. And I have to tell you, an individual came to me, and the way that I felt about this was, PARC test, the PARC testing is coming, and everybody understands that it's a rollout, and some districts chose MCAS, but they'll be doing PARC. And an individual came to me today and said what I felt, our children, Milton's children and students weren't left behind, and there's no reason, if this is going to be the testing in the next century, our students are immersed in it, our teachers have been trained, and again, there was a level of calmness across the district, but excellent anticipation, and they were prepared. So we're in the midst of the PARC testing. We're also in the midst, if you would go to our website, if you have children the age of preschool, kindergarten, or first grade, we're in the midst of that registration. I would ask you to check those dates. Tomorrow night, any parent of a rising sixth grader, parents of current fifth graders who are going to be sixth graders next year, I will remind you that tomorrow is the Pierce School Fifth Grade Information Night at 7:00 in the Pierce Auditorium. A special reminder that this Friday, the MFE Teacher of the Year Award nomination forms are due to your school principals or offices. On the 24th, our CPAC has asked me to remind everyone, Tuesday, the 24th, the CPAC presentation, they have Dr. Annie Curry in the Pierce School Auditorium at 7:00 on student anxiety. The CPAC has put a tremendous amount of work into identifying this speaker, and they're very proud to be sponsoring this night. On March 25th, the Milton High School Program of Studies will happen in the Charles Winchester Auditorium at 6:00. Little bit of very good news, a few points, the next meeting will be bringing our Globes, Zolastic, art and music winners, and perhaps our tournament players from the teams, but a personal favorite of the superintendent's is our Future Problem Solving Program. And so our teams from the elementary and Pierce went to Canton High School and competed, and I'm proud to announce to you that at Pierce, Zoe Malouf, Dominique Thomas, who I think her mother may have been in the audience waiting for this announcement, but had to get home to check her homework, and Claire Walco are competing, are moving to the state level. We also have individual students who are going to have asked if they can compete individually. I think that is the ultimate testimony to their dedication to the program. At the Cunningham Team, Baron Clancy, Anna Hamblett, Anderson Corman, and Mary McLeod, you know two of those individuals from the last meeting, are moving to the state level. And the Glover Team, Hadley Blazdel, Aura Bouchot, Bouchot, and Ian Lundin are moving to the state level. So that was an email in the middle of the night last night. Laurie Henry, Bill Bano, who works part-time in the program, and Nicole Hasinas, her name? I didn't pronounce her name correctly, Pierce School teacher. Those teams are moving, they'll be going on April 11th to Mass Maritime Academy, and they'll stop preparing, doing the research now to compete at the state level. And remember, twice, we've sent teams of students to the national competitions. Very, very exciting. Very, very exciting.
Can I ask a question?
Anything.
When's the anxiety presentation?
Very good to repeat that. On Wednesday, is Wednesday, March 24th?
Mm-hmm.
No, is that a Tuesday or Wednesday?
I thought you said Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, thank you.
Right. And the reason I was asking is that it's not just-
Student anxiety.
Right. It's not just for kids with special needs, it's for, and anxiety is the highest level of a mental health issue for kids these days, so lots of parents-
It would be nice to be able to fill-
Yeah.
-the Pierce School Auditorium at 7:00 on March 24th with parents and guardians of citizens, and the CPAC has done a tremendous amount of work researching that speaker, and they're very proud to be sponsoring that night. Thank you.
Can I just ask one follow-up on the PACC? Seeing that the entire test now is online, essentially, are the results expected back faster?
Well, I'm going to-
No.
Did you say yes?
Interesting.
So, we, you, well, to say this, I never want to say anything that I'm not sure about when we're at a school committee meeting.
Okay.
So, we believe, what, do you have-
So, you don't want to break that rule now?
Right. So, Ms. Kelly, a report out at the next meeting when the results are going to-
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, as I mentioned, we've received a couple of communications from the Mass Association of School Committees regarding designating MASCE as a representative for the specific purpose of arbitrations and receiving arbitration decisions. The reason that they've asked us to do this, and the reason that I think it makes sense, is because, as they explain in this rather lengthy text here, the unions are either statewide or national organizations, and as such, have access to a much larger library of arbitration decisions. The designation of an arbitrator is an important decision to make, because the way that that decision gets made is you look at the arbitrator's previous decisions, and how he might decide, he or she might decide, in order to try to predict whether he will support the position that you have before him or her, or not. So, what MASCE has proposed is that they will help us to create this broader library of arbitration decisions. So, I've also talked with Joe Emerson, our Labor Council, he thinks that this is a good idea, so I have a motion to make such a designation. Any questions?
So, this is just in terms of arbitration, not-
Specifically, just for arbitration.
Arbitration, okay.
Yes.
And why wouldn't we do this?
I don't see any reason not to do it.
Thank you.
So, the motion, yeah?
I was just going to ask if you made the motion, I wasn't clear if that was the motion.
Here it comes.
Okay.
I move that we designate the Mass, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Inc., as one of Milton School Committees' representatives pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 150E, Section 1, for the particular purpose of selecting an arbitrator and receiving arbitration decisions.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Ms. Kelly?
Do they charge us more for this?
No.
That's great. Fabulous.
Recharge.
Good question.
On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous. Finance Subcommittee?
Yes, we have an approval of a vendor warrant. Dr. Pavlicek?
We have tonight, vendor warrant number 38, dated March 19th, 2015, in the amount
So, I would move approval of warrant number 38, in an amount of $428,452.62.
Second. Moved by Kelly, seconded by Walker. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? 402, Zulus and Kelly abstaining. Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee?
Yes. So, this is by means of an update, and a recommendation, a voted recommendation, which occurred on Monday evening, and that's when we recommended, as you'll hear, our survey, that we suggest for parents and guardians. First, just a quick, let me get my folder, a quick update. What we're in the process of doing is, is identifying the issues in transportation and traffic safety for each of the schools. We have not collected all, all of the issues yet for all of the schools, so we're in that process, and we're trying to segregate those issues by global issues and specific issues. As specific issues have come up, we've tried to deal with them. For example, as of March 9th, the alert system for bus issues changed, and Jake Smith was, changed that alert system. In the past, when the alerts went out, and there was a bus issue, all of the parents throughout the district received that alert. Now, those alerts are going to be targeted just for the parents and guardians for that specific bus. So, for all those parents and guardians, you might want to update the, what you have, what the schools have in terms of how they contact you, if you have a cell phone, because if you're at the bus stop, you might want that alert to come to your cell phone, as opposed to your home phone, or to your, to your email. So, that's, so that's a, hopefully, an improvement. And second, and this is what, well, what the presentation is, what we're, what we're looking at now, and we don't have music tonight.
But you have neon yellow.
The Chair is correct.
Right.
That, we don't have music, and that was really because, it was a time issue, and so, anyone, anyone here wants to take a moment and just get in their head, Katrina and the waves, walking on sunshine, and if you want to hum it to yourself during the presentation, then it may go a lot more smoothly.
And we're sending out a public appeal for anyone with PowerPoint skills to contact Mr. Zulus.
That would be much-
Graphics and sound.
That would be much appreciated. So, so anyway, what we're doing in terms of walking assessment, we're, we're working with Safe Routes to School, Jana Lindhart is on our committee from the Mass Department of Transportation. Let me see if I clicked this correctly. Oh, got it. So, again, who we are, committee charged by this committee, a Subcommittee charged by this committee, comprised of now myself and Ms. Bagley Jones, to the extent that she is able to-
Can I just say, because I feel bad, we were supposed to meet on Thursdays, and Jana could only come on Mondays, and I have a class on Mondays, and she's much more of a valuable person than I am on that particular committee. So, that's why I can't be there.
Kristen graciously deferred for our-
You'd rather have Jana.
I didn't say that.
No, I do.
I didn't say that.
I do. Thank you.
So, Glenn Pavlicek, Jake Smith, and one parent from each of the elementary schools and the middle school, appointed by the PTO Presidents, are charged, as you may or may not remember, to coordinate development of solutions to safety, transportation and safety issues with Milton Police Department, Public Works, Traffic Commission, Town Administrator. That is the effort that we're undergoing now, to kind of come up with a, an exhaustive list of what the issues are, and then figure out, to figure out where we need to target those efforts, and what department we should go to. In the meantime, we have been looking at reviewing walking and biking enhancements. As you know, traffic congestion, as most people know, traffic congestion is an issue in most of the schools, so if we can create a culture and enhance more biking and walking to the schools, then that would help congestion. To that end, the Safe Routes to School, Mass Department of Transportation, is assisting us in doing walking assessments. The, the goal of the walking assessments is to come up with safe routes, and identify safe routes for people to, for, for students and parents and guardians to walk, and to, to come together in what they call walking school buses, where maybe there may be one parent or guardian in neighborhood who is able to walk the students, and if they all know about it, then all of those students can congregate in one area, and they can all walk to school, as opposed to maybe, you know, four, or five, or six, or seven, or eight cars driving those school, driving those students to school before they, before they rush off to work. So, so if we can, if we can create these routes, the safe routes, and these would, again, these would be created, working with Safe Routes to School, working with the Police Department, working with the other interested parties, then we will help, I think, engender this culture of walking and biking. What we've done so far is, Safe Routes has, has taken all of the residences at the different schools and created residence maps, and this will assist in, in, in developing the safe routes. So, we, for each of the schools, we have, the, well, Department of Transportation has created these maps to show where the concentrations of students are in the different, for each of the four elementary schools and the middle school. And the next step to that is our travel survey. And that survey is a very simple survey, we would be assisted with, assisted by Department of Transportation in doing it, there would be no charge for it, the survey could be done online, or we're, we're, we're going to also have handouts to go in the students' backpacks as well, so the parents can either fill out the survey, and it's, as you see, it's a very simple, one-page survey. What we get as a result, if we get parents to, to fill out the survey, and also, I might mention, there is a $250 bonus to the school that fills out the most surveys. So, but, but it's not for the parent to spend themselves, it's for the schools to spend on biking or walking efforts. So, so the parents, it's a one-page survey, very simple, what we get is a report such as this, this was for Greenfield, I think, and they used the information from the parent guardian survey to develop this report showing all the statistics for student proximity to school, student travel choices, and how they could, how their school compares, and how they could enhance walking and biking for their school, school system. So, we fill out the surveys, we may get the gift card, the school that fills out the most may get the gift card, and then we get a report about what is happening now in the school system. And then, oh, this is, yeah, this is just the end of the, end of the report. So, based on all that, we recommend, the school, our Subcommittee has recommended that the Superintendent and the Department Director of Transportation coordinate with the principals of the elementary schools and the middle school to participate in this survey, by sending an email to all parents with the hyperlink to the survey, and hard copies in the student backpacks. Our recommendation was to, to get this out before, before school vacation, so we could make use of it, and with a goal toward, to developing the safe routes, the safe walking routes, hopefully by the end of this year, so we can have something in place by the beginning of next year. And so, our hope is to send out a notice during the week of March 30th, or before, to the extent the Superintendent can, can do that, and then the survey would be open online, and through the forums would be open from April 3rd through the 17th. Our recommendation is also that this, this be, the survey be conducted in the spring and the fall, because travel changes, and so, you get better data and better analysis if you know what students and parents and guardians are doing in the, in the spring and in the fall. So, that is our, those are our efforts on student, or biking and walking to school.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
I just want to point out that a lot of these things come from Jana, John, however you say her name, who replaced me, much more, I could never have done any of that, but she was on our Health and Wellness Committee as well, and I said, "Could you come to this instead, because this clearly is so helpful to us?" And I'm just so impressed with all the work that you guys have done, and I am very sorry I'm not there, but clearly, I could help you with the PowerPoints, but other than that, I think you guys are doing a fantastic job, and it's much appreciated.
Well, thank you to Ms. Bagley Jones for referring Jana, and thank you to Mr. Zulus for the work that Subcommittee's doing. It's good that we're seeing some results. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you very much for this presentation. Just wondering, so, does the Safe Walk to Schools, whatever the organization is, do they coordinate with the Police Department, and, because ultimately, you know, how we got here, I think, granted, I think there've been individual efforts at Glover School, but how we got here was because people in East Milton were concerned about how to get their kids to school safely.
People in various parts of town.
I'm sorry?
People in various-
I'm sorry, in a ver, but, but I think before us was East Milton, but, but it brought up issues around town, correct? So, will the product of this process produce those sort of safe routes that we're talking about for everybody, or is it, is that another part of what you're working on?
For, for everybody, and you mean each school, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the intention. The intention is to come up, the, the, the goal is, at some point, to have a, to have a, a page on the Milton Public Schools website, where parents, that says, "Here are the safe walking, safe walking routes." Click on it, click on the school, "Here are the safe walking routes." And, and beyond that, maybe, "Here are the places, here are the, the neighborhoods where there are walking bus, you know, walking buses that can congregate." So, so that's the goal, to get there, the idea is to come up with what we think the safe walking routes are for, for each school, and I'm not entirely clear on what, you know, how we're going to do, how we're going to coordinate that. All I know is that, that Safe Roots, John, has committed to working with us, and working, we mentioned, working with the Police Department, and working with the schools, and working with the parents, to figure out, and actually walking the routes, I mean, actually walking the routes and figuring that out. So, so that's going to, that's going to take some coordination, we need to get the, kind of the background data first, and then we need to coordinate and figure out what those routes are, or what, what the consensus is about, you know, what the routes are for Glover, what the routes are for Colicott, and how to, and, and in addition to that, maybe how to enhance them as well, and that'll be additions.
Great.